Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.
We have a public hearing, two public hearings tonight. The first one is regarding potential changes to the city zoning code. By any chance, do we have anybody who does want to speak tonight about changes to the city's COVID zone? We'll give it a minute to see if anybody wants to talk. Is there anybody out there who does want to speak for the public hearing on changes to the city zoning code? Going once, going twice, going three. The first public hearing is now closed. We have a second public hearing on the mayor's executive order. Before I call that for anybody who wants to speak, I will read the executive order. Quarantine restrictions on gathering in the city of Portland. Whereas, the city of Portland recognizes the dangers that the spread of COVID-19 represents. The city must protect all of its citizens, be they residents, workers, or visitors. The city recognizes the temptation for all to return to normal through socialization, entertainment, and assembly. The city must meet its obligation to protect and serve all residents. Now, therefore, forth. Brian Tobin, the mayor of the city of Portland in the state of New York, by virtue of the authority vested in him by the Constitution and laws of the state of New York and the charter of the city of Portland to adhere by order and direct as follows. The chiefs of police and fire shall enforce the following and be authorized to enforce the following terms of this order by such means necessary, including employment of various sections of public health law, criminal procedure law, and penal law of the state of New York. Effective August 25th, 2021, at 12:00 p.m. through Saturday 15th, 2021, at 12:00 noon, any gathering or event with 50 or more participants anticipated at any location in the city of Portland is directed to file an application with the city clerk's office, which application shall include a written detailed COVID protocol to be utilized at setting event. Requirements would include a plan for enforcement of masking indoors regardless of the vaccination status and outdoors following CDC COVID protocols. The mayor of the city of Portland, upon request, may exempt certain events with a COVID safety protocol in place. Any request must be supplemented with the event's plans for COVID-19-related safeguards and planned implementation. Any violation of this executive order may be deemed a violation of Penal Law 240.45, which is a Class B felony pursuant to laws of the state of New York. Given this date of August 25th, 2020, and the seal of the city of Portland, the state of New York. This is by the mayor, Brian Tobin. And I might have misspoken when I said 12:00 noon on September 15th. It would actually be 12:00 p.m., midnight, that it would be at. In reading this, we will now open a second public hearing as far as on the executive order. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? If we have nobody who would like to speak, we will... Well, yeah, I don't think we have Chief Sandy. Chief Sandy does have someone who does want to say. And this would be concerning of 9/11.
Good evening, everyone. In light of this executive order, which I do expect will go through, the 9/11 ceremony, which has already been approved, we will be making some changes and I will file a protocol. We've already discussed, we're not having a half-day event to encourage people to refrain from gathering. We will maintain during the ceremony the same protocol as last year. Everyone in participation will be wearing a mask. Everyone in attendance will be asked to mask regardless of vaccination. We will also encourage citizens to view this from home live streaming. I'm sure Portland Voice will live stream it, and we could have citizens view it from home to keep the crowd manageable and hopefully less than 50. We will provide masks and hand sanitizers to those who are in attendance that need it. And if CDC changes any guidelines between the passage of this and 9/11, we will certainly comply with this. Thank you.
I'm definitely streaming it if you want to see it. I'm streaming it.
Legal counsel, I have a question for you. On the mayor's executive order, it says it will end September 15th at 12:00 p.m. Does he mean 12:00 midnight or 12:00 noon? 12:00 a.m. midnight, that's what I always thought. I accidentally said 12:00.
Midnight or Monday? Should be A.
It's 12:00 a.m. again, midnight?
Yes. It's not, it doesn't need parsing. It's going to expire on the 15th and start on the 25th.
It's going to start on the 25th.
Right away. And one other correction. The 240, it should be a class B misdemeanor, not a felony. On the last page.
On the last page, it should be what again?
240, a class B misdemeanor, not a felony. I'll change it before it goes to health department.
Okay. That would be much better than me changing that because nobody's up in my camera. Very good. Okay, do we have anybody that would like to speak at all on the public hearing on the executive order by Mayor Brian Tobin? If not, we would call the public hearing over. And now we will proceed to the formal agenda. Call E. 203. Mayor 3, stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic for its strength, our own nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, minutes. Do we have a motion to...
Public comments.
Ah, thank you. Before the minutes, do we have public comments? Yeah, public comment session. Do we have anybody that would like to speak? Absolutely nobody? This is what happens when we go back in person instead of Zoom. Okay, moving on. If we have nobody who would like to comment during the public comment session, we will now move on to approving the minutes from council meeting August 3rd. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion made by Councilman Carpenter, second by Jackie Chapman. All in favor of approving the minutes from August 3rd, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Discussion.
Discussion.
Discussion. Hey, I knew I forgot something. It's been a while since I've sat in this chair. Before we get to the vote, is there any discussion on minutes? Now, all in favor of the vote, say aye.
Aye.
Amazed, amazed. The motion has been accepted, the minutes have been approved. Now to the formal agenda. Agenda item number one. Time to put the reading passes back on. Consideration of a resolution to approve the mayor's executive order. Motion to accept. Alderman Solomon? Second, councilperson Tyler. Do we have discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're clear on the wording on this, which says it starts on the 25th at 12:00 p.m. Deputy mayor, when you were speaking, you said 12:00 a.m. I just want to make sure that we're having the right time on the official document. That's all I'm asking for.
No, I am confused. Actually, I asked you if I said 12:00 p.m. for vote and then changed it to 12:00 a.m. again. Go ahead.
Whatever it says on it, the chiefs will have, and they will...
Whatever this says, that's okay, that's fine. Just want to clarify that.
Any other discussions? Any questions at all? Just an opinion, unfortunately, I don't think anybody wants this to have to happen. But unfortunately, it is happening. The new strain, the Delta variant, that's been out there, is impacting millions. I, you know, not going to get on bandwagon and say it's anybody's fault. But obviously, COVID-19 does not want to leave as soon as we would like it to leave. And as a city, as a responsibility to our constituents, to everybody who comes within the city, as the mayor states, visitors, employees, anybody, we have an obligation to help protect them. Hopefully, hopefully, one day, this will all be over. Hopefully. Not going to win. Saying that, no more discussion. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, the motion passes. Six. The motion passes 7-0. Agenda item number two. Consideration of a resolution to approve the special event application along with all other required applications for the Chamber of Open House bash on September 23rd, 2021, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. By any chance, is Bob Hayden here? Okay, well, I haven't got there yet. Do we have a motion to accept? Bruce Tyler, second. Councilperson Carpenter, discussion. Did everybody receive the information?
Yes, but they don't accommodate this new executive order regarding vaccines and protecting against COVID-19. Can you hear me? I'm sorry. So I'd like to say I'm not comfortable voting on this until I know that they're going to amend their plans in light of the fact that we're now a high-risk county.
I really have to concur with Katie. And I'm sure you get to this name into the clerk's office before this is discussed.
Esri? It's, the event is scheduled for September 23rd.
Which is after the executive order.
The executive order will expire on 15th. Unless you extend it, then they'll have to change.
That's a good point, but I'm just anticipating that we'll have more problems before we get it under control just because we're already a high-risk county, surrounded by high-risk counties, and that's before kids are back in school. High school, elementary school students, as well as SUNY students. So I would feel more comfortable if they had some plan attached to this allowing for the possibility of needing to amend their plans for COVID-19.
We do still have one more meeting prior to this engagement, which would leave us some last-minute changes if needed. I would almost suggest that we go ahead and approve this, but there may be changes forthcoming if things get worse or look worse.
Is it possible to approve a pending review of the emergency plans based to be provided by the chamber? Because I am looking at the event and it's about seven hours. But they are expecting about 500 people, so that's more than that 50 in any given hour clock, say.
Yes.
And it's a small space. I peeked in. It looks really nice. I hope a lot of people do get a chance to take a look at it, but it's small up there. Do you think maybe we can table it and somebody can reach out to Bob? I'd be willing to do that and ask him if he could submit a plan along with this and come talk to us next meeting. Would that be okay?
I may not have been aware of this executive order coming. So he may change his plans anyways.
What was it, Katie? Karen?
Knowing Bob, he's a pretty responsible individual. I would tend to lean towards Tom's idea. We can pass this. If we have to make a modification on this, I think it's the 7th of September. That's a full two weeks and a couple days before his event. That would give him plenty of time if he needs to... No, we don't know where we're going to be there, but where we still are, we have to extend this to the executive order of the emergency and gathering. We could still do that. He still have time to plan that. I would be amazed if Bob isn't already thinking of that, knowing him and how he operates. So I'm okay with voting yes on this, so that they know we're supporting this. And we can have the mayor, or somebody can contact him. I'm sure he's going to hear this. Hey, but we are so concerned about the virus that Bob sort of might want to think about putting a plan in place. He'd have to, and then we could discuss that on the side.
I believe at a prior meeting, we tentatively approved an event and required that a COVID safety plan be submitted before the actual event.
True.
And I'm just wondering if maybe we can make that approach so that we know that there's...
Sure.
It's already being considered.
Yeah, I was just going to say, what I'll do is I'll reach out tomorrow. It hasn't been told. Due to it's going, which it does. Who says? I'm sure Bob has thought about this now and asked me. That we do need to say COVID safety protocol plan. Put in place.
Just in case this is needed, I'd be really good and comfortable. That's a great idea. Thanks, Matt. And it's also consistent with COVID 19.
Yes, no, I'm comfortable going ahead and giving approval to it. As I say, I'll reach out to Bob tomorrow and talk to either him or whoever there. And I'm sure we'll save the one we'll reach. We'll reach the mayor's office.
Okay.
Okay. Do we have any more?
Do I add to the resolution with the tentative? The expectation that they will create a tentative plan kind of thing? Do we have that under? Is that what you want to do, Kat?
Yeah, I think that would cut it.
So let's see here. Exactly what should the wording say? And with approval, approval, approval of...
COVID safety.
COVID safety protocol plan?
Yeah.
Contention of approval. Contention. Are you getting that right? Okay, any more questions, discussions? I'm listening to that.
You got to approve the amendment. You have to approve the amendment.
Yeah, yes. So now we need a motion to approve the amendment. Motion by, first by Bill, second by Jackie, all in favor?
Aye.
Now back to approving the agenda. So now...
We have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we have a motion.
So now we can just vote?
Yeah, we can just vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes 7-0. Amendment passes 7-0. Agenda item number three. Consideration of a resolution to hire a substitute crossing guard. Motion to consider. Alderman. Councilperson Solomon. Why do I say Alderman when we discussed this two years ago? Motion.
Second by Arthur.
Bones, councilperson Tyler. Discussion. Chief Sandy? Have anything to say?
I think there's a missing step. First, we should approve to lift the hiring freeze and then fill the substitute. We had a very long-serving, dedicated individual, Marian Fetter Rosi, retired at the end of the school year. So we typically have a couple subs to fill in when people were sick or out of town or something. So we will use one of our existing subs to cover her crossing. And we would like permission to hire another substitute to have in the background.
Okay. So now, actually, then we need to, if I'm correct, we have to remove this motion. Because we need to do one hundred, or we need to add an agenda item to this item. For coming to lift the hiring freeze.
Okay.
You guys have done both.
Do we have any questions, though, any discussion on the side?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm a little... Ray, if you have a procedure, I thought we lifted the hiring freeze a while ago for the police department. They hired patrol officers. Does this require us to lift it every single time they bring somebody new to us?
I think you should ask council, but I believe you have to do it for any position.
Okay.
You can ask however you want.
Okay.
Each time is ground before us.
Okay, so we got to take your premise, which is that you can just have to say that back up, right?
Please use the mics. But Freddy says, our clerk says we can vote on the hiring and then do a vote on lifting of the hiring freeze. We can do that. So all in favor of this one, of the agenda item? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Now, we will be adding an agenda item, which will become number four. And that would be consideration of a resolution to lift the hiring, to lift the hiring freeze for... It would be for the police department for crossing guard division, police department. So it would be a consideration of a resolution to lift the hiring freeze for the police department. Do we have a motion to accept? Councilperson Michaels, second. Councilperson Carpenter, discussion. No discussion? Vote on the matter, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Motion passes 7-0. I'll get the hang of this by the time we're done. Agenda item now number five. Consideration of a resolution to lift the hiring freeze and fill a recent sewer of the equipment operator at the DPW. This post was opened by lateral move from the DPW employee moving over to the water department to fill the water distribution maintenance workers' position. Motion to accept. Motion accepted by Bruce Tyler, seconded by Tom Michaels. Discussion. And I believe there are totally in some audience?
Good evening, everybody. I spared you a lengthy email on this because I believe I outlined most of why it's an even position in the previous email regarding the maintenance distribution worker and the other sewer worker who is leaving his post on, I think, September 4th. You guys have any questions? We have three sewer positions at the DPW that cover the entire collection system and all the storm sewer. And right now, we're down 2-1. Pretty important.
Will that be the same rate of pay?
I think coming in, it's a little less.
A little less, okay.
The contract stipulates it goes on like the hybrid payment, so. Okay, it's pretty close, but it's a little less.
Okay. Yep.
These are factored in for positions, obviously.
Yep.
Any other discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, man.
Yeah, I just wanted to take one minute if I could as it relates to staffing levels at the DPW. Our new deputy superintendent, Al Riccatelli, in the room over there, is good this evening. And I'm sure that you'll hopefully develop a good working relationship as you do with me, with him. I was planning on forwarding all of you's contact information tomorrow. We just started yesterday.
All right.
So I want you guys to... Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, man. Good luck.
Thought maybe that's why you're here tonight.
Agenda item number six. Discussion and set a date for a public hearing regarding E. 203 and increasing the number of members on the police commission. Motion to accept. I mistake, this is a discussion. So... When might we be able to set a date for this?
I would say as soon as possible. This is Executive Order 203, which was, we spoke about numerous reforms and working with the police department and handing global chief Sandy and previous chief Catalano. So I'd like to get this on the back as soon, so people can come and speak about it.
So the 7th is our...
The first meeting is September, the 2nd is 7th.
Something tells me that the mayor has held off on items tonight to keep it a short meeting. So we're going to need pacifications, and I think the 7th is going to be pretty busy as it is.
I don't mind. And trust me, seven things came off last month. But we don't want to see seven things come up that I felt that the mayor should be here for. So this is as far as I'll go with that. So are we in agreement, September 7th?
Yes.
Is that good enough for you, Rick?
Yeah, the local law is already drafted, so you're all set.
Okay. We should be preparing for this for September 7th at 7:00 p.m. Before we get to the last agenda item, I do need to ask council that after the last agenda item, for permission to go into the executive session. All okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. And also, I did forget to read again before we go to the last agenda item. I forgot to read earlier an update from SUNY. And again, so if you can give me a minute, my apologies.
John, before you do that, after the executive session, we're anticipating action.
Well, I was going to say that when it came down to that scale. Okay? But thank you, Rick. Okay, this is an update from SUNY Corlin for their fall 2021 guidance. Vaccination requirements for students. SUNY Corlin is requiring all students living on campus to be vaccinated. In addition, all athletes and those participating in club sports and recreational sports are required to be vaccinated. All students and employees who use the Student Life Center will also be required to be vaccinated. Students who have started their vaccination series will have until September 11th, 2021, to be fully vaccinated. Until that time, they must follow all the restrictions for unvaccinated students, such as mandatory weekly testing and maintaining physical distance. Once one of the COVID-19 vaccines is fully authorized by the FDA, all SUNY Portland students, both those living on campus and off campus, will be required to be vaccinated. There will be a very short window of time for students to comply to this mandate. Vaccination clinic. SUNY Portland will host a vaccination clinic on Saturday, August 28th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. Students can sign up online for this opportunity. Face covering requirement. Face coverings are required in all public indoor spaces at SUNY Portland, regardless of an individual's vaccination stamps. This includes classrooms, the Student Life Center, common areas, and residential halls, and offices. This extra level of protection is in response to the rising caseload and the high transmissibility of the Delta variant. And that is a statement from SUNY Portland. I'm gonna guess probably submitted by Fred Pierce. It's not an agenda item, but do you want to have any discussion on this?
Well, I'm willing to say that I'm really happy to hear that. I understand that they're waiting until the FDA approves the vaccination before demanding that all students get it. I was waiting to see what they would say about off-campus students, and I'm just really pleased that they're coming out strong on behalf of their own community, as well as the larger community. And I hope that the people of Portland will take it upon themselves to do the same, that we'll all arm ourselves against this virus.
Very good. Anything else? I don't, in all honesty, I think they mean well. You know, it's very easy to criticize, especially a year ago, but again, everything was new, nobody was really, this was not something anybody had ever come across before. We had many concerns. And again, too, like everybody, we all thought, as we got a little bit into summer, that things were easing off, and getting better, and then again, too, COVID-19, it's ugly, dangerous head, and that's as now is not gone yet. So I'm, myself, also, I'm very happy that SUNY is taking a hard-line approach. And again, too, at this point, all we can do is really hope that the FDA mandates passes it and approves the vaccinations ASAP. Moving on to the last agenda item. Set a date for a public hearing and making Valley View Drive an all-way stop at the entrance to Portland Junior Senior High School. Nick, are they talking both ends, or, okay, Valley View is up at the Taple Hill, or are they talking both down on Main Street?
No, the entrance to the high school. So to go into the parking lot, come out, exiting from, from the school itself. So, Ray.
Okay, just from the parking lot onto Valley View.
Yes, yeah, there's stops at Apple parking lot, nothing on Valley View. Up Forward View, the GPW board looked at this and decided that they wanted a little more reassurance. We did a traffic study at CNS, actually did for us, Up Forward View, all that information, and that was supportive of an all-way stop, instead of having a police officer there in the morning, maybe tonight.
Okay.
Yep.
Council, would you like to set the same date, September 7th, for a public hearing? Okay, you will set this up for a public hearing, and Tuesday, September 7th. That concludes about it, oh, I did not say that includes the formal portion we attended. Council, do you need to go into the executive session? We do expect action on this when we come out.
You know, statewide, you're going into executive session. State why you're going into executive session.
Why you're going in.
Yes, later discussions, we got. Okay, do we have a motion? Councilperson Carpenter, seconded by Tom Michaels, the person Solomon. The, should be back shortly, thank you.
All in favor?
Thank you, all in favor. Motion to come out of the executive session, or is it bills, the first motion, the second by Katie?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
All in favor of coming out of the executive session? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Now we need to add an agenda item. This will be agenda item number eight. That would be an agenda, okay, to resolution, resolution to approve the tentative agreement?
Rick? Yes, with the, the, what's your...
Would be a resolution for the city to accept, to approve the tentative agreement with our agreement.
Yeah.
Portland Professional Firefighters Association.
Professional Firefighters Association. Did you get that, Matt?
We did.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Jackie, seconded by Bruce Tyler. All in favor, say aye. All, discussion? So you hear some discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero.
Six.
Six, zero. Your vote is not on the vote.
He's been voting all night.
We changed it to six zero.
That's okay, I'll take it with Rick, he's in the passing side of the vote. Either way, at this time, Jack concludes the formal agenda items for the evening. Is there anything else I would like to discuss?
No.
If there is that, we can have a motion to...
Say aye.
Motion by, Tom? Tom? Seconded by Bill. Thank you, everybody.
We have one all in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Stay connected. Make sure you hit the subscribe button.